I'd like to call the meeting to order. 2.2, Pledge of Allegiance. Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice as our own. Are there any public comments? Seeing none. Well, let's go back to 2.3, adopt the agenda.
So moved.
So moved in second. Vote please. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? In a few short moments, we'll begin our program. Thank you very much.
Good evening and welcome to the 2024 Employee Appreciation Ceremony. My name is Mary Rowan Goodwin and I have the pleasure of serving as the District's Director of Communications and Community Relations, and I'm your emcee for this evening. On behalf of the Board of Education and Superintendent Mauricio Ariano, we want to express our gratitude to all of the dedicated, classified, and certificated employees who make hope happen across our district each day. It is your hard work and commitment to our students that makes us, makes our district shine. We appreciate all of you, and we are pleased to host this special reception in your honor. Thank you to Principal Kristen Bykandova and the entire Indian Springs High School community for welcoming us to your campus this evening. Honorries, our event staff will show you where to enter the stage when it's your time for your category. Event staff, please wave to the audience. Okay. I would also like to take this opportunity to thank the Communications and Community Relations Team for the many, many hours they put into today's event. Special thanks to our Human Resources Department, our Nutrition Services for catering this event tonight, Maintenance and Operations, Safety Office, School Police, and our Campus Security Officers for all of the time and energy they invested in this special event. I also want to recognize the special assistance we received from our cadets tonight. We could not have done any of this without the dedication and collaboration of these teams. Let's give them all a big round of applause. The Crystal Apple Awards are part of a longstanding district tradition to recognize employees for exemplary service. These honorees were submitted for consideration and vetted by a committee through a blind screening process, which ultimately determined our finalists. Executive Cabinet determines the Certificated and Classified Manager Honorees each year. We are excited to begin our Employee Appreciation Ceremony by presenting the Crystal Apple Award to 10 deserving employees who have consistently gone above and beyond to help our students succeed. Let us begin with our Certificated and Classified Manager Award recipients. This year, the 2024 Certificated Manager Crystal Apple Award winner is San Bernardino High School Assistant Principal Frank Jancy. Frank is a dedicated administrator who has made an indelible mark on the lives of students in colleges alike. Throughout his 26-year career at SBCUSD, Frank has gone above and beyond the call of duty to ensure the success and well-being of district students. Thank you and congratulations on your award. This year, the Classified Manager Crystal Apple Award winner is Nutrition Center Chef Alonso Alonso. Alonso, come forward, please. As the primary chef in SBCUSD, Alonso crafts diverse recipes to make next-level, cooked-from-scratch meals that appeal to our more than 46,000 students. For his passion to give SBCUSD students the most nutritious food, we thank you Chef Alonso and congratulate you on your award. Now it is time to present the Crystal Apple Awards to our four classified winners. Our first Crystal Apple goes to Bilingual Secretary Two at Riley College Prep Academy Karen Parkhurst. Now Karen could not be here this evening, but we would still like to congratulate her on her recognition. Our next classified honoree is Kathy Scott. Kathy, would you come forward at this time? Kathy began working with the district in 2001 in the Educational Services Department. She currently serves as the Records Clerk in the Special Education Department, where she has been since 2004. Karen is about to be a grandmother for the second time, and she attends evening classes to pursue her psychology degree in her spare time. Thank you Kathy and congratulations on your award. Audience, please put your hands together for Daniel Tisdale as he comes forward at this time. Daniel has worked for SBCUSD since 2015 and serves as the district's digital content producer. Daniel has produced videos and provided the video voiceover for countless district productions. Daniel has helped to bring the Board of Education meetings to virtual audiences time after time. He and wife Kim have a one-year-old daughter named Sophie, and I'll let you in on a little secret. Daniel is the voice of this evening's special announcements. Congratulations, Dan. Next, please welcome John Wilson as he makes his way forward. John's journey with SBCUSD began while working as a school accounting tech one at King Middle School. Since then, he has worked as a payroll technician, account analyst, and now a contract analyst, all within the Business Services Division. According to John, each position has been immensely rewarding, and he looks forward to continuing his service to SBCUSD. Congratulations, John. Our first certificated honoree is Bonnie Elias. Bonnie, would you please come forward? Bonnie joined SBCUSD in 1986 as a librarian at Cajon High School, where she worked for over a decade. Since 2000, she served as a librarian at Sierra and San Andreas High Schools. Bonnie loves that she has watched her former students grow to become successful members of society and continue their love of reading. Congratulations on your award, Bonnie. Congratulations. Please help me welcome Rosa Leon Blanco. Rosa has worked at the Inland Career Education Center since 2014. She double majored in Spanish Literature and Language and pursued graduate studies in Socio-Linguistics, Second Language Acquisition and Special Education, focusing on career technical education for adults. Thank you and congratulations on your award. Our next classified honoree is Kathy Scott. Next, please help me welcome Heather Mirarky as she makes her way forward. Heather has worked for SBCUSD for 25 years. Prior to becoming a school counselor, she was an elementary school teacher. She's worked at Lytle Creek Elementary and currently works at Riley College Prep Academy. Thank you and congratulations on your award, Heather. Next, please help me welcome Yasmeen West. Yasmeen has been an SBCUSD teacher for 20 years, teaching math and science at Shandon Hills Middle School. She taught math at Chavez Middle School before continuing on to her current role as a demonstration teacher and instructional coach at Indian Springs High School. Thank you Yasmeen and congratulations on your award. Audience, let's give all of our Crystal Award Apple winners another round of applause. At this time, we are honoring two employees who have reached a unique milestone with SBCUSD. They are celebrating 50 years and more of dedicated service to SBCUSD schools and students. When these dedicated and loyal employees began their productive careers with us in 1969 and 1974 respectively, they probably could not have imagined how significant their impact to SBCUSD would be. As a small token of appreciation, George Bond and Linda Martin will each receive a special award to mark this huge milestone, and we are so pleased to present this special appreciation video in their honor. Audience, let's take a look at our first video of Personnel Commission, George Bond, who has served SBCUSD for an incredible 54 years.
I'm George Bond and I am a Personnel Commissioner. And my wife, and she was a teacher, and one thing led to another, and there I am. There I went. I really believed that I was gonna end up being a teacher because I was not a very good student when I was in high school. And so, and then I put in four years in the military and two years in industry before I got, went back to college and finished up. In 1967, and I substituted for a year and a half, almost two years, and then my first full-time teaching job was 1969 at San Gregonio. About 16 years, and then I was two years as a middle school vice principal, and then nine years, I think it is, as a high school vice principal, both at San Gregonio and Cajon. And then I was nine years as the adult school principal. And then with the commission, which is, which has really been a very nice activity.
Mr. Bond, would you please come forward at this time to accept your award? Audience, let's give him another warm round of applause. 54 years. Congratulations, Mr. Bond. Audience, our next video is for honoree Ms. Linda Martin, who has served as an instructional tutor primarily at Muscoy Elementary for a remarkable 50 years. Let's take a look at her video at this time.
My name is Linda Martin. I'm an instructional tutor, learning handicap, physically handicapped, and I work for the Special Ed Department. And now I'm at Muscoy Elementary School. I started with the district September 1969, and I worked until June of 1970. The reason why I stopped working was because at that time, women were not allowed to work while they were pregnant. Once they start showing, they had to stop working. And so I stopped working, and then in January of 74, that's when I started back working with the school district as a tutor. So I came to Muscoy, worked for a year, then I left and worked other schools, and then I came here in 83, 84 school year, and I've been here since then. But I've worked at other schools. They would give me like two school assignments. I've worked here and I worked at Shandon Hills. So it'd be like a split, half-half. I've had a good time with the district, and like I said, I worked at different schools and I was able to meet different people and different students, you know, and it's like, you know, it's been a good experience.
On behalf of the Board of Education Superintendent Ariano, Mr. Bond, Ms. Martin, please accept our gratitude as we thank you for your extraordinary contributions to SBCUSD. That was just a drill. We're okay. We needed some levity. We need to loosen up a little bit.
We are preparing to recognize our 40-plus and 35-year honorees and our 2024 class of retirees. First, we will begin with our 40-plus category. When instructed, please bring the blue name card staple to your bag that you received at check-in and enter the receiving line on the side of the stage where you see the district logo. Please pause for a photo with Superintendent Ariano and Board President Danny Tillman at the blue mark before exiting the stage. For those remaining in the audience who may wish to come forward for photos, we encourage you to remain seated. Our photographers are working extra hard to give you a large gallery of pictures, which will be available in the next 48 hours through the QR code in your program. Honorries, please return to your seats following your recognition as a courtesy to your fellow honorees. Thank you. And audience, please remember, the entire front section is strictly reserved for our honorees. If there are open seats available, we ask that you please fill in every seat to maximize space.
Next, we will recognize employees who have served the district for 40 years or more. These honorees are receiving personalized glass plaques commemorating their four decades with SBCUSD. Please bring the blue card you received with your bag at check-in and begin to make your way towards my team members over there. We have our lovely Communications Manager Maria Garcia. You will hand your card to her and she will read your name.
Our first honoree is Adrian Cook. Marina Calderia.
Congratulations.
Luisa Dominic. Ilie Deng. Josefina Kessada.
Let's give all of our honorees a warm round of applause. Our next category belongs to employees who have served the San Bernardino Unified School District for 35 years. These employees will also receive a personalized glass plaque commemorating their years of service. Please hand your cards to Maria Garcia and she will read your names. Our first honoree is
Kim Dao.
Stephanie Shaughnessy. Regina Davis. Rich Imbriani. Constance J. Phillips. Joanne Zamora. Alice Piercy.
Let's give all of our 35-year anniversary honorees a round of applause. Congratulations. This year, the district will say goodbye to 135 dedicated employees who are eager to start their much-deserved and highly anticipated retirement. Let's give them all a rousing round of applause and cheer them on as they close out their final year with the San Bernardino City Unified School District. So I see you've all brought your blue cards with you, right? Let's see them. All right, very good. So at this time, we will allow Maria Garcia to read our first name. Our first retiree is Marcia Favors.
Diana Valenzuela. Maria Judith Greenfield. Vicki Allen. Leo Curtis. James Vazquez. Yanda Marie Agar. Erin Caparucio. Laura E. Giamona. Brenda
Brenda Maggi. Robin Sandusky. Harold Ream. Laurence Orellola Koya. Janine Falcons. Wendy Brown Jensen. Maddie Rogers. Christina Leroy. Yati Soto. Laurence Smith. Gerardo Orozco. Roxanne Benson. Adrian Cook. Constance Phillips. Josefina Quesada. Maxine Roach. Evangelina Cervantes. Suli Del Valle. Robert Valdivia. Paula Lee. Congratulations once again to all of tonight's honorees. This concludes our first program session. We want to thank you for coming out, and we will have some housekeeping notes for the rest of you if you are here for the second portion or if you are leaving for the evening, but thank you for coming tonight. Good evening and welcome to the SBCUSD Annual 2024 Employee Appreciation Program. My name is Mary Rhone Goodwin, and I have the pleasure of serving as the district's Director of Communications and Community Relations, and I am your emcee this evening. On behalf of the Board of Education and Superintendent Maurice Ariano, we want to express our gratitude to all of the dedicated, classified, and certificated employees who make hope happen each and every day. It is your hard work and commitment to our students that makes us as a district shine. We appreciate all of you, and we are pleased to host this special reception in your honor. I want to offer special thanks and appreciation to Principal Kristen Bickendova and the entire Indian Springs High School community for welcoming us to your campus. Honorees, our event staff will show you where to enter the stage when it's your time for your recognition category. Event staff, please wave to your audience. I would like to take this opportunity to thank the Communications and Community Relations team for the many, many hours they put into this evening's event. Special thanks to our Human Resources Department, our Nutrition Services for catering this evening's event, Maintenance and Operations, School Safety Office, Campus Security Officers, and School Police for all of the time and energy they have invested to make this event special. I also want to recognize the special assistance we have received from our cadets this evening. We could not have done any of this without the dedication and collaboration of these teams. Let's give them all a big round of applause. The Golden Apple Awards are part of a longstanding district tradition to recognize employees for exemplary service. These honorees were submitted for consideration and vetted by a committee through a blind screening process, which ultimately determined our finalists. Executive Cabinet determines our certificated and classified manager honorees each year. This year, we will award Golden Apple Awards to just six individuals who represent the many outstanding employees in our district. Let us now begin with our certificated manager award recipient. This year, the 2024 Certificated Manager Golden Apple Award winner is Dr. Amy Coker, Director of Elementary Instruction. Dr. Coker is a dedicated leader with a passion for student success. With nearly 29 years of education experience, she champions innovative strategies to ensure all students receive a quality education. Amy's commitment to equity and collaboration makes her a valued asset to the district and a deserving recipient of the Golden Apple Award. Thank you, Dr. Coker, and congratulations on your award. Our next certificated honoree is Lorraine Lori Bowen. Lorraine, would you please come forward at this time? Lorraine brings 19 years of dedication as an elementary school teacher in SBCUSD. Her journey includes enriching stints at Davidson Elementary, Bradley Elementary, and her current role at George Brown Junior Elementary School, where she serves as a demonstration support teacher and TIP mentor. According to Lorraine, teaching is her passion, and she is actively engaged in pivotal committees like the Leadership Team, Grade Level Lead, PBIS Climate and Culture Team, and Tier One Site Team. Thank you, Lorraine, and congratulations on your award. This year's final Golden Apple Certificated Honoree is Cynthia Shimming. Cynthia, would you please come forward? Cynthia started with SBCUSD in 1999 and serves at Anderson School and has been teaching adult students with moderate to severe disabilities with a focus on transition and independence. Cynthia received her Bachelor of Science degree from Cal Poly Pomona in Business Administration and has a Master of Science from National University in Special Education. She and her husband Mark have two children and recently celebrated their 38th anniversary. Thank you, Cynthia, and congratulations. This year's Classified Manager Golden Apple Award winner is, oh my goodness, Tom Candelaria! Tom is a dedicated and highly skilled professional, serving at the district's Operations Manager, demonstrating dedication and exceptional abilities. With extensive experience and a steadfast commitment to excellence, Tom plays a pivotal role in maintaining the safety, functionality, and aesthetic appeal of our school facilities. In his capacity, he oversees vehicle services, custodial services, and grounds maintenance. Thank you, Tom, and congratulations on your award. Our next Classified Golden Apple Award winner is Crystal Beruman. Crystal, would you please come forward? Crystal began her SBCUSD journey as a student intern in 2003. As a student intern, she worked in HR Classified, Purchasing, the Language Assessment Center, and Employee Benefits, where she has served since 2005. When she's not working or serving at her church, Crystal likes to spend time with her family, especially with her niece and nephew. She also enjoys new experiences. Thank you, Crystal, and congratulations. Our final 2024 Classified Golden Apple Award winner is her very own writer and photographer, Karina Borsa. Karina is a proud product of SBCUSD. She was a Del Rosa Dragon, a Golden Valley Knight, and a graduate of Cardinal City. She credits Joey K. Anderson, the San Bernardino High School Tyro Times Advisor, with her nearly 24 years of service to this district. Since she set on her path to becoming a photographer, Karina says the best part of her job is getting to see our students at their very best, winning awards, showing off their skills, and earning their diploma. Karina is also a writer, appearing in several newspapers and magazines, and she is most proud of the article that appeared in the San Diego Comic-Con souvenir book. Thank you, Karina, and congratulations. Audience, let's give all of our Golden Apple Award winners another round of applause. This is the inaugural year for the district's new Rising Star Award. This award recognizes employees who are in their first two to five years of service, either to the district or they've been promoted to a new position during their last two to five years. Our very first certificated managing Rising Star winner is... Oh, she's making her way over there. Let's do a drum roll, please. Dr. Lewis Wilkins. Dr. Kalila Lewis-Wilkins. Dr. Lewis Wilkins is a laser focus on enhancing student achievement, fostering mastery, and shaping students into impactful citizens. Her leadership is characterized by commitment to involving all educational partners. A recent University of Laverne graduate, she has nearly two decades of dedicated service in education. In her spare time, Kalila enjoys 3D printing, reading, and exploring new ways to support her students. She loves spending time with family, friends, and her two golden doodles, Max and Ruby. Thank you, Dr. Lewis Wilkins, and congratulations on your Rising Star Award. Our very first Classified Manager Rising Star Award winner is District Police Sergeant Daniel Arias. Sergeant Arias was selected in recognition of his exceptional dedication to serving SBCUSD students. He's been with SBCUSD for 16 years and in his current leadership role for nearly three years. Daniel embodies the qualities of a true role model, consistently going above and beyond and ensuring the safety and well-being of our students. His unwavering commitment to their security, coupled with his genuine care and compassion, truly sets him apart. His desire to support and uplift our students, along with his dedication, compassion, and commitment to service, make him a deserving recipient of the first Classified Manager Rising Star. Thank you, Sergeant Arias, and congratulations. This year's Certificated Rising Star winner is High School Counselor Nariya Garcia. Nariya has worked in SBCUSD for five years. Nariya has worked in SBCUSD for five years, working previously at Cajon High School before taking her current position at Indian Springs High School. She received her Master's, PPS credential, and Bachelor's of Arts in Psychology at Azusa Pacific University. Nariya enjoys going to concerts, coaching softball, traveling, and eating good food. Thank you, Nariya, and congratulations on your award. This year's final Rising Star Award winner is Employee Melissa Robinsons. Melissa began working for the district in 2018 as a recreation aide at Hunt Elementary before becoming a health aide at Highland Pacific Elementary School. Melissa is a very proud wife and mother of five amazing children ranging from ages 12 to 22. She frequently volunteers for the Unforgettable Foundation and other small nonprofit organizations, and in her free time, she enjoys going to car shows and socializing with family and friends. Thank you, Melissa, and congratulations on your award. Now I invite to the stage a person who has been instrumental in our efforts to shine a light on many of tonight's honorees. Please help me welcome Employee Development Program Specialist Dr. Morgan Pelleterra to the stage with a big SBCUSD round of applause. Take it away, Morgan.
Thank you, Mrs. Goodman. Tonight, we also gather to honor and celebrate the achievement of the district's newest National Board Certified Teachers, a testament to their dedication and commitment to the field of education. I'm so proud to introduce our newest and most recently recertified National Board Certified Teachers, Axel Olsen and Faith Hurst-Balinski. Axel and Faith, would you please make your way forward at this time? Audience, please give them a warm round of applause. Axel, a math teacher at Middle College High School, was one of only five teachers in the entire San Bernardino County to certify last year. And Faith, who maintained her certification last year, originally certified in 2019, and as many NBCTs do, went through a rigorous process to maintain her certification at the five-year mark. I'm also excited to show that we have many current San Bernardino teachers on their own in National Board Certified Journey, middle school social studies teachers and math teachers. Our district is supporting them in many ways, especially through a $15,000 grant we received from the California Teacher Association. Axel and Faith, it is my honor to present you with your official National Board Certification pin.
We are preparing to recognize our 30- and 25-year honorees. First, we will begin with our 30-year category. When instructed, please bring the blue name card on your bag you received to check in and enter the receiving line on the side of the stage with the district logo. Please pause for a photo with Superintendent Ariano and Board President Danny Tillman at the blue mark before exiting the stage. For those remaining in the audience who may wish to come forward for photos, we encourage you to remain seated. Our photographers are working extra hard to give you a large gallery of pictures, which will be available in the next 48 hours through the QR code in your program. Honorees, please return to your seats following your recognition as a courtesy to your fellow honorees. Thank you.
Our next honoree category is for SBCUSD employees who have served our district for 30 years. These employees will receive a certificate of appreciation to commemorate their years of service. I see that you all have brought your blue cards, right? Let's leave them in the air. All right, very good. And at this time, I'd like to invite our Communications Manager Maria Garcia to introduce our first honoree. Of course, Mrs. Applegate is one of our esteemed Executive Cabinet members, serving our Educational Services Division. Let's hear it one more time for those dedicated employees who gave SBCUSD three decades. Our next honoree category is for SBCUSD employees who have served our district for 25 years. These employees will receive a certificate of appreciation to commemorate their years of service. If you're here to celebrate 25 years, let's see those blue slips. You all brought them, all right. And Maria, if you would do our first honor. Of course, Dr. Funches is... Of course, Dr. Funches is the Assistant Superintendent of Human Resources.
Katie Erickson Hernandez.
Robin Sandusky.
Hector Franco.
Jennifer Johnson.
Laura Hunt.
Stephanie Dirks.
Tamika Casey.
Erica Koo.
Maddie Rogers.
Yvette Peters.
Nicole Johnson.
Sandra Shirley.
Jalen Turner.
Lorena Guevara.
Donna Espinoza.
Rosalie Miguel.
Jacqueline Edgett.
Tamika Hendricks.
Julie Freeland.
Imberly Beck.
Jennifer Callaway.
Rona Halburn.
Rona Halburn.
Christopher Cortez.
Angela Serano.
Robert Watkins.
Rene Martin.
Paige Toon.
Marilyn Dodson.
Mari Tescueva.
Lynn Billings.
Angela Wheeler.
Rosendo Mendoza.
Joe Beltran.
Lawrence Oriola Coia.
Benita Harris.
Barbara Dunn.
Rebecca Matthews.
Audience, let's give another round of applause for our 25-year honorees. Congratulations once again to all of tonight's honorees. This concludes our annual employee appreciation program. Thank you for coming and good night. Board President, Mr. Tillman, I yield the floor to you at this time. Meeting is adjourned, everyone.